Good morning. I'll call the November 19, 2019, regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Supervisor Leopold.
Here.
Friend.
Here.
Coonerty, McPherson, and Vice Chair Caput.
Here. And if we could have a moment of prayer or moment of silence, and then we'll follow with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, there are. On the regular agenda, number eight, staff request that this item be continued to December On the consent agenda, item 22, there's additional materials, the letter of the Superior Court. On item 23, there's additional materials, Granicus Exhibit B. And on item 45, there's a correction. The item should read, and quote, "And direct parts to return on December 10, 2019 for approval of the lease." There's also additional materials on item 45 that revised Memo Packet Page 1,060, and an attachment A. Thank you.
And do any of the Board members wish to pull any consent items from the regular agenda or any comments? Okay. And now's the time for public comment. How many people would like to speak at this moment? Okay. We'll go with three minutes. And now's the opportunity for the public to address the Board on topics that are on today's agenda, consent items, closed session agenda, and topics that are not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the Board. If you cannot stay later to speak on regular agenda items, you may address the Board on those items at this time. Okay, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mariah Roberts, and I am now here talking as the Director of Friends of Santa Cruz County Parks. Thank you so much for your service. The last time, last few times you've seen me here, it's been to thank you for your partnership to build Shannon Clear Park, Leo's Haven at Shannon Clear Park. And I want you to know that very soon we will be reaching out to you with an invitation to come to the rip and cutting. Okay, so thank you so much. That park is incredible, and it also proves that private-public partnership is a great way to realize our community's hopes and dreams. We have more than 49 county parks and beaches. At least 14 of them have community-designed master plans that look so beautiful but are on paper and are sitting on shelves without funding. The funding is just hard to find. It's oftentimes not there. The community needs and loves these spaces. They serve the community. We want to thank you for directing, Director Gaffney, to continue working with us at Friends to help look for ways to do more things like Shannon Clear and to continue these private-public partnerships to realize what our community has already told us that they want and need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Tricia Proctor, and I am part of a team of local philanthropists who are trying desperately to donate to the community design plan out at Aptos Sea Cliff Park. I want to thank you for supporting Director Jeff Gaffney of the County Parks Department to continue working with Friends and us to see this project through. And because of the private-public partnership of the Shannon Clear Park, we are hopeful we can see many projects like that one and the one out at Aptos Sea Cliff. So, thank you.
Okay.
Hi, good morning. My name is Stephanie Weingarten. I reside in Boulder Creek. I just came in this morning to share a situation that I had yesterday. Yesterday, I had a man pull into my driveway, walk around my home, and begin taking photographs. I had no idea who this person was, and I have to say I was concerned, very concerned. I had my children at home. I was a little bit concerned for my safety. When I approached him, he did identify himself to me as a code inspector from the planning department. My recommendation today to you would be that your planning department employees wear IDs and drive vehicles that are clearly marked. I don't, I don't see why he wouldn't have had a lanyard on with an ID or pull into my driveway with a vehicle with clearly marked letters saying that it was a county, a county vehicle. So I'm here today just to, to say that, just so that there's other women at home that aren't concerned for their safety because someone's coming into their property unannounced without ID. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Good morning, all. Rod Caborn with Save Our Shores, and thanks for all the work you're doing. Apologies, I would not be available later on, hence my speaking now in the public moment. It's with regard to your great work on plastic pollution and the 25-cent fee that you're planning on, on placing on cups, which needless to say, I very much endorse. But I did want to state that I hope so very much that you all as a body, as much as you've done great work thus far, and that would be toiletries that you've already accomplished, that hopefully will go through. And you've already expressed some enthusiasm around balloons and contact lenses and creating restrictions on that. But I would like to implore you that that isn't the time to leave it as, you know, we've done as much as we can, we've taken care of things as far as they will go, and we need to move on to other items. Because still in, it's, it's the big, big stuff, and it's on the table, and I've mentioned it before. I think that a bottle ban, plastic bottles in our community, I think you guys are uniquely positioned as the authority on this in a place where it could actually go through. And I know that the community is behind it, and I know that the business community can get behind it because you guys are actually part of the reason that this particular community in this place in California is so progressive and is so well-informed that they will take it on. And if we do that in Santa Cruz, California, the rest of California is watching, and then therefore the rest of the nation is watching. And this could be something that really gets us going to the point where we start addressing the plastic pollution problem as one of production. This will be one that's emblematic. The plastic bottle is an emblem and a symbol of this struggle. And when people grasp that, yeah, this is doable, then it could explode, and it could ultimately get to, it all starts at grassroots, but it could ultimately get to the producers of plastic and ultimately look to different means of providing non-plastic-produced products. This is how it will start. And again, you guys are uniquely positioned to make it start. It's been done in other cities, as I've mentioned before, and it would be huge if you guys were to lead it here in Santa Cruz, California. Thank you.
We have now action on the consent agenda. Supervisor McPherson?
I just, I want to make a comment on a few of the items, number 29, 30, and 31 regarding county fire. I'm glad to see that we've updated our code and strengthened our fire prevention enforcement. And I'm also glad to see our local fire districts have updated their ordinances to align with the counties. I want to thank CalFires, in particular, State Parks, Santa Cruz Police and Fire, and the Sheriff's Office for meeting with my office earlier this year to ensure that we have a consistent enforcement of campfires. It's important that we all are providing the same type of response and education to folks in this regard. On item number 41, the Downtown Streets Team, once again, I want to thank our Human Services Department for coming up with this innovative approach to using our CalFresh dollars. I'm pleased to have Downtown Streets Team working in Felton, as they have been for a longer period of time in the city of Santa Cruz, and I know Supervisor Coonerty is happy to have them now in support in Davenport. There is one question I'd have, maybe you could answer. If we've received requests for Downtown Streets to expand to other areas too, do you know whether the DST has a capacity to add more of these teams? Do we have the CalFresh dollars, or is there an opportunity to get that?
Good morning, Supervisors. Ellen Timberlake, the Director of the Human Services Department. I would say that yes, we do. I want to just acknowledge what a wonderful partner Downtown Streets Team has been with our department, and every time we have approached them to see whether they could expand to the North Coast. Felton, currently we're in conversations with the Grant Street Emeline area. They have been very receptive and responsive, and so we are, as you know, we are very committed to expanding this program wherever there's a need and an opportunity. So I do believe that they would welcome any additional conversations around expanding to other areas, and we would certainly support that.
Okay, granted. Just for people to know, Downtown Streets Team is the homeless population in particular that get remuneration through food and clothing for their 20 hours or so that they spend cleaning up our communities. It's, it's a win-win situation to help those feel some, some more worthiness, I guess you'd say, in this regard, and cleaning up our communities. And so if people see them and they're, I think they're most, all, they're all yellow shirts, just say thank you for doing what they're doing because they're helping our community, and we're helping them to get back on track. So it's a great program. One other thing on the ADU program, I want to applaud the County Planning Department for its work they have done in the recent years to promote accessory dwelling units, to incentivize property owners to, to build them. I think it's probably the best way we can, most immediate way we can address affordable housing issues in this, our community. The San Renzo Valley portion of my district, this is the main way we've been able to impact affordable housing with our limitations that we have in land use restraints, an acre parcel per parcel. But in, I wanted to find out if there's, we have a forgivable loan fee and a waiver program, and if, do you think we could, we would see, I don't know if anybody or if they, from planning could let us know. It seems like we could even do better, and if we lowered those commitments, do we have any indication that that could help us not have a 20-year program, maybe, or commitment, or, and a 15-year commitment instead, something of that nature?
We haven't found that the, the term of affordability is an obstacle. What we have found is, as people are interested in the idea of building an ADU, and I think that the programs have helped along with a lot of programs going on statewide, pique the interest and get people started on the process. I don't think that the term of affordability would make it faster. I think it just takes the time it takes. It's a complicated process to build an ADU.
Okay, thank you for that effort, and I want to thank the County Board in particular for us addressing our, our housing crisis that we have here. I think this is a good way to go about it, and we have had some success. And if we can make it better, if there's any suggestions, I would welcome them in my office, and I know that the others would too. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's it.
Thank you, Chair. And I'll just briefly speak on a couple items. On item 26, I'd just like to officially welcome Jason Heath as new County Council. We're excited to have you officially take over the reins of that position. We know you have our full confidence, and we're excited to have you take that position over. Item 40, the agreement with Pawara Valley Prevention and Student Assistance. It's hard to imagine more important work being done than behavioral health work in our local schools, especially in the South County. So I appreciate the Director of Health Services entering into this contract. PVPSA does remarkable work, especially in the South County. And as we've seen across the country, I think that the more money we can put into prevention, early intervention, and behavioral health programs in schools would be important. Item 45, we had two members of the community come to speak to this, but it's, it's to accept the donation of design plans for a skate feature at Sequa Village Park. As was mentioned, this is actually a pretty significant deal. It's pretty remarkable that we're able to complete a part of a phase of a local project because we had some people in the local community step up and say that they wanted to do this. I appreciate the work of the Director of Parks. I appreciate the work of the CAO's office and County Council as well on this. But we do have these master plans, and in some cases, I know for one of my colleagues here for the farm park, it goes on for quite some time. For me, for polo grounds, for almost 30 years, there was bathrooms that were committed to that never existed. So we didn't want this to just be a master plan that sat on the shelf. And as a result of a partnership with some local community members, it looks like Phase Two of this park's going to happen a lot sooner than it would have otherwise, and we owe a lot of, a huge debt of gratitude to you on that. On item 47, to echo some of the comments that Supervisor McPherson said, I do believe that it shows here that the fee waiver program's clearly working. I mean, we've doubled the number of applications we've received than before the state and local changes were made. And I think that accessory dwelling units are really one of the huge keys here to building local affordable housing. It's actionable, and it's doable. It's hard, as we saw with the very important project that was approved last week in, in the mid-county area. It's hard to build a large apartment complex. It's hard to build deed-restricted affordable housing. It's not that hard to build ADUs, and you can really build as many units in a year as it takes us maybe 15 or 20 years to build the same number within one development. And I think that this is an important component of affordable housing within our county, and I think that we should continue to try and do everything we can to work on it. And I appreciate the work of Ms. Conway in our, our housing section of the planning department. She does remarkable work for affordable housing in our community. And I'll close on item 51, which is just the approval of an emergency contract for repairs on Sumner. This has been a very complex project, and I appreciate Public Works's partnership with the utilities that helped cause some of this, as well as our own issues on a very old culvert through there. It's a complex, not just number of players involved, it's a very deep and large project involved, which is why you see the cost. But it's pretty important because most of the road there, if you haven't been through there, is basically collapsed, and so I appreciate you taking the lead on that in Public Works. Thank you, Chair.
Supervisor Leopold?
Good morning, Chair. Just a couple of items to comment on. I will add my congratulations to Jason Heath as our new County Council. This contract that we have here is just another example of the way in which we are recognizing him. We will, he will start after the first of the year, and we will miss our current County Council when, when she leaves us at that time. On item number 36, I'd like to thank the Sheriff and his staff for seeking out this funding to support school safety. I think it's really important. It's something that constituents talk about all the time, and they value the partnership that the Sheriff's Office has with our local schools. So thank you for going out and getting that, that funding. On item number 41, the Downtown Streets Team, I want to appreciate the work that Downtown Streets Team does, and appreciate that the Human Services Department has found new ways to use some funding to expand their outreach. After doing a cleanup with the Grant Park Neighbors Group, it became real clear that that was an area that could take advantage of that, in the Emeline area, and I'm glad to see that we're moving forward with that, and I look forward to that starting in February. And that's it.
I'll go a little bit out of order only because, Marilyn, do you want to speak on the consent agenda or anything that's not on the consent agenda? I'm assuming you got caught in the traffic on Highway 1, and if you would like to speak, you may too, okay? And I won't say anything, I'm giving you my time.
Wow. Thank you very much. We were caught in terrible traffic, as you probably were earlier. My name is Monica McGuire. This is all I can think to do today. There's trouble in the world, there is no denying. Too many people are crying and dying. We've got problems like last night at the fire protection meeting. We heard how they've begged and begged for funding and been told there is none. How can fire protection not get funded so many years in a row? How can our firemen be left telling us their requests fell on deaf ears? How can we be asked to pay more taxes now? How can that be? What we need is a way to come together, to be represented. Not being there last night seemed horrifically angering to most of the 50 in the room. I don't understand what's needed to pull more of the county together to act, but I'm willing to sing today to try another way to get that message out. And I thank Becky Steinbrenner for calling the meeting last night and giving a forum as needed for people to say what's going on and get beyond the frustration. Thank you.
Welcome.
What a gorgeous voice, what a wonderful person.
This is the singing portion of the meeting, so Marilyn, if you, if you'd like to sing, that's all we'd like.
Oh, that would really not be good, believe me. Thank you. Okay, so, thank you Supervisor Caput for letting us speak. We definitely were caught in traffic. Reference I want people to know for the wireless microwave danger is TakeBackYourPower.net, Barry Trower, and Dr. Magda Havas, and a recent testimony by Dr. Sharon Goldberg opposing 5G in Michigan, where she starts out saying wireless radiation has biological effects, period, to the peer-reviewed literature, and focuses in on the diabetes epidemic, heart problems, mental health, and there's a whole list. And these facts of the harm are not new. I took this book off the shelf from my parents' literature, my mother, avid reader, The Zapping of America, microwaves, their deadly risk, and the cover-up. Microwave radiation can blind you, alter your behavior, cause genetic damage, even kill you. The risks have been hidden from you by the Pentagon, the State Department, and the electronics industry. With this book, the microwave cover-up is ended. This is by Paul Brodeur, written in 1977, 42 years ago, what a lot of the evidence shows today. I recommend that book highly, and I'd like you to agendize in the future signing on to the international appeal to stop 5G on Earth and in space. You've been provided copies of that more than once. And locally here, the push for 5G and 4G as a precursor to it took place in this room, an approval of a cell site at the Seventh Day Adventist campsite on Old San Jose Road, approved by the zoning administration administrator on the first of this month. It's on appeal. But available at the back table was this Verizon Wireless Communications Facility paper, put out by Verizon, engineering necessity case. Necessity?
Finish up.
I thought food, clothing, shelter, employment was necessity, necessities, not getting more microwave damage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Caput. You extended this time, an opportunity for Marilyn. Are you willing to extend it for me? Thank you very much, and I appreciate your kindness and respect for the public's opportunity to speak before your Board. Thank you. My name is Becky Steinbrenner. I'm a resident of rural Aptos, and I want to thank Ms. McGuire for bringing to you in a very creative way the issues that came up in last night's public meeting in Cora Lido's. Supervisor Friend, we really missed seeing you there. It was an opportunity for people to get information, and I really want to thank, and information, information about the proposed public benefit assessment for County Service Area 48, an additional fee that is before the voters, property owners now. And I really want to thank county staff, CAO, General Services, Chief Larkin was there, Ginny Petrus from General Services, and the engineer, Jeanette, came down to talk with people and give them good, accurate information. There was a clear voice of the people. They do support county fire and all that it offers, but they want to know why you, the Board of Supervisors, is not willing to give any money at all of Proposition 172 and Measure G to county fire. You've got to be accountable to this. You get $18 million last year, and all but a half of a percent went to law enforcement. And now you come to the voters to ask for a lot of money. For some people in the audience, they're barely able to hang on. They talked a lot about how property taxes are already a big struggle for them to pay. And it isn't the lack of service that they're talking about. It isn't that, that they're not willing to support county fire. They are, and everyone appreciates the service that county fire volunteers and CalFire provides to the state responsibility area. But you, as our elected officials, need to step up and fund it, and that's what the people resoundingly said last night. So I want to just also point out, on your consent agenda, item number 28 brings a little bit of money in to help with funding apparatus and, and equipment, so I'm grateful for that. And I also want to just say that on item 39, Balance Hydrologics, this, this Thursday, tomorrow night, the Mid-County Groundwater Agency will be approving their plan for groundwater sustainability, and Santa Margarita is, is on the heels of that too. So I hope that you, and I know some of you are on that board, I hope you will carefully look at that plan. And some good news, we all need good news, coming in today, sitting in traffic, I heard that effective January 1, 2020, ocean trawling will be illegal all along the coast of the Pacific. That's good news. Thank you. And thank you again for allowing us to speak. Thank you.
Do we have any comments or action on the consent agenda?
I would move the consent agenda.
We have a first and second, Leopold and McPherson, and we have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? That's unanimous. Now we'll turn to the regular agenda, item number seven, on building codes. Mr. Palacios?
Yes, this is a public hearing to consider ordinance amending Chapter 12.1 of the Santa Cruz County Code for the purpose of adopting the 2019 California Building Standards Codes and local amendments, and the resolution accepting sequin notice of exemption determination. Schedule the ordinance for final adoption on December 10, 2019, and take related actions. Schedule the ordinance for final adoption on December 10th, 2019, and take related actions as outlined in the memorandum of the Planning Director.
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors. David Carlson from the Planning Department. In the state of California, every county and city is required to enforce the California Building Standards Codes in Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations. The county implements this requirement through Chapter 12.10 of the County Code. Every three years, the state updates the state building code, and every year, the county is required to readopt the state building code through an amendment to Chapter 12.10 of the County Code. Local jurisdictions are allowed to make amendments to the state code, and the county does that in Chapter 12.10, includes all the local amendments that the county has adopted over the years, and we're proposing to readopt all those amendments with only minor changes. There's no real significant changes to the 2019 California Building Code. The new significant change is a requirement that as of January 1st, 2020, all new homes in the state of California will be required to be solar-powered. And California is the first state in the nation to implement that. And so with that, it's therefore recommended that the Board of Supervisors conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed amendments to Chapter 12.10 of the Santa Cruz County Code, adopt a resolution making findings regarding technical amendments of the California Building Code, and find the proposed amendments are exempt from further environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, and directing staff to file the sequin notice of exemption, and adopting concept the ordinance amending County Code Chapter 12.10 for the purpose of adopting the 2019 Building Standards Code with local amendments, and direct the clerk of the board to place the ordinance on the next board agenda for final adoption, and direct the Planning Director to submit a copy of the technical amendments to the 2019 California Building Standards Codes and a copy of the board's adopted resolution containing the associated findings to the California Building Standards Commission. And that concludes my presentation. We're here, available for questions. I'm here with Marty Heaney, the chief building inspector for the county.
Okay, any comments, questions from the board?
Really appreciate the state stepping up for all solar-powered new homes. It's about time, and it's going to really be a benefit to the state and our community from now on. Really appreciative of that.
Any questions or comments from the public? You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate three instead of two. Thank you Supervisor Caput. My name is Becky Steinbruner. I'm a resident of rural Aptos. I would like to also ask that our building department consider working toward implementing required water recirculation within homes. New construction at UC S.A. I'm told by the City of Santa Cruz Water Department is already doing this, that whenever you let the water run to get it hot, that it is in a separate recirculated system and can be returned to use for toilet flushing or things like that. That is present in the industry. It would be a huge water-saving feature for new construction in our county, and I urge this county to move forward with such water-saving devices in all new construction. I also ask that your board take a hard look at policy established in 12.10.150, and that is the regulation that makes you the Building Code Appeals Board. It is required that every county have one such board. This county used to have a board that was composed of licensed, qualified industry specialists in various construction fields, and that was the board. For some reason, county's administrative officer, Susan Mariallo, changed that. She took it away from the professionals, and she gave the power to you. You are very well-qualified in many things, but I do not think that this is a service to the people who want to bring these sorts of appeals. And I expect that you would have to call in experts, and that's an expense to the county. Let's take it back to how it should be and used to be, and reestablish Code 112.10.150 as the Building and Fire Code of Appeals being composed of local, qualified, licensed professionals.
I'm going to keep up the singing. I love what Becky just said because she reminded me again of all the things I've known and asked about. For example, I wonder about passive solar as well. It's been around since the '70s, and it saves so much energy. Different from active solar, most people don't even know what it means anymore. But it's easy to add to building codes, is it not? You're nodding your head, thank you. And Becky's point, I met Dan Bronson, one of the former people who did get appointed as the backup for inspections that people come to ask about, and he was run out of town. All five of the previous people who were appointed to help and listen to the public who didn't like what building inspectors said were told they weren't welcome anymore, and that was the end years and years ago. I'm told that's not legal in the state. I'd love for you to tell us what's true about that. Please give us more answers.
I'll ask each member if you have any comments, and go ahead. We can do it in any order.
Thank you for doing this work that we do annually. It was great to see the state moving forward, and I appreciate the efforts of our building department to incorporate these changes. I would move the recommended actions.
One second.
Any other comments? No? I'm just curious, it was brought up, the water circulation, I heard that 30 years ago. That's an old idea where the water circulates, and then when you turn it on, you don't have to wait for hot water to come out of the faucet. Is that something? Do you have any comment on that?
Yes, sir. It's not a mandatory measure, however, it is available to the customer if they want to install a research pump.
Right. But it's an old, old idea.
It is.
So it would save some water.
Absolutely.
And what is, is the solar shelf life longer than it used to be? Before, on solar power, you got about 20 years, you lost about 5% per year. Is that improved?
It has. The quality of the solar panels have improved greatly, and I'm being told by people in the industry that it's 30 years now for a good system.
So what would you say if the newer solar power, what would their shelf life be?
I'm being told by the industry it's 30 years.
Okay. We have a motion, and do we have a second? First by Leopold, the second by Supervisor McPherson. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposition passes unanimously, and we'll go to item number eight, public hearing to consider adoption.
So item eight was continued.
Eight was continued, so we're going to nine.
Right, okay, you're right. Go to nine. Consider report and study session on the Santa Cruz County Performance Measurement Initiative, and direct the county administrative office to return in May of 2020 with an update as outlined in the memorandum of the county administrative officer. Go ahead. Are there any questions or comments from the board members?
So they're going to be giving a report. So this is Nicole Coburn, Assistant CAO, who will be introducing the item.
So, good morning Supervisor Caput and members of the board. As Carlos said, I'm Nicole Coburn, Assistant County Administrative Officer, and I'm pleased to be here today for this study session on performance measurement. We have called this a study session because we want to work with the board in establishing the community impacts we want to measure and track, and we also want to get your feedback on our first efforts in creating program dashboards that educate the public and provide accountability and transparency. We're going to be doing this study session today in two parts. Right after we present our draft community impact measures, we want to take a moment to pause and just see if you have any input. If not, that's fine, we can move forward with showing you our program dashboards, and then we can take your feedback at the end. During the latter part of this study session, you're going to be hearing directly from members of our Parks and Probation Department. They're going to be discussing how this initiative has been received and the results of the initial dashboards and what they hope to realize. So with that, I'm going, as you can see here, this slide shows our four management initiatives. With board and staff support, the county has staggered the introduction of four initiatives over the last two years. We have the strategic plan that the board approved a couple of years ago that sets our direction. We also have our operational plan and two-year budget to create and finance our priorities. We have Primo Santa Cruz, a continuous process improvement effort, which is ingraining improvement as part of our everyday work. And finally, this year, we are rolling out performance measurement as a tool to measure and report on progress across these initiatives. So performance measurement and process improvement both start from the premise that every county employee wants to know that their work is having a positive impact on people's lives. With performance measurement in particular, we want it to be useful to departments, empower our employees, start small, learn and build on our successes, and educate the board and the public on what we are doing to provide transparency and accountability. So now to give you a more in-depth preview of what we've been working on as part of the performance initiative, I'm going to introduce Sven Stafford from the county administrative office.
Thanks, Nicole. Good morning, Supervisors. As Nicole mentioned, performance measurement is a tool to measure and report on progress across our initiatives. And the best way to think about the different types of measures is to consider the level of impact. So at the strategic plan level, we're talking about community impacts. At the operational plan and budget level, we're talking about program impacts, and at the Primo Santa Cruz level, we're talking about process impacts and improvements. So the strategic plan works at the community level. The board established a vision, mission, values, and 24 goals for the county. In order to measure progress towards achieving that vision and mission, we need to establish a set of community impact measures that can serve as a proxy for the types of changes we want to see. To do this, the county is aligning with the great work being done by the Human Services Department and CORE. Through an extensive community process, CORE has established eight CORE conditions, each of which has a menu of 20 to 30 indicators. We have worked with CORE to align indicators so that measures we are tracking are a subset of the CORE condition menu, and CORE will present more on their progress to the board in January. We have chosen to limit the number of measures we have to 24 in order to keep it relatively simple, and we had provided a draft list for the board today. All of these indicators will be tracked through the county's partnership with DataShare. DataShare includes over 230 indicators that are automatically updated, and we are working diligently with the DataShare Steering Committee to include data from the Community Assessment Project, additional CORE results menu indicators, and eventually locally-generated data. And you'll note that approximately 14 of the proposed 24 indicators are currently available in DataShare. So let's take a quick tour to see what that looks like in action. So you'll see under the draft community profile, community impact indicators are arranged by the strategic plan focus area. In this first example, under health and safety, we can see that we have an indicator around adults with access to a usual source of health care, and can see that we compare well with other California counties. If we click on the link, we get even more information from our DataShare portal, including definitions, sources, the ability to disaggregate by age, gender, race, and ethnicity, and then links to related indicators, promising interventions, and other data resources. And eventually, this will also link to a CORE conditions dashboard that will be built on the DataShare platform. So for next steps, we would like to get in board feedback on the draft community impact measures. We will continue to work with CORE to align impact measures and get them into DataShare. We will continue to work with DataShare on creating a community platform for data that is equitable, accessible, and drives coordinated collective impact. We plan to return to the board in May with proposed measures, and then return annually thereafter to report on progress and make recommendations on indicator updates. And at this time, we'll take a pause to take any questions and feedback the board might have on the community impact measures.
Supervisor Leopold?
Thank you, Chair. Just a question, these community impact measures seem very good. There is one that I want to just have you explain and think maybe if this is the right indicator or whether we should be looking at another indicator. This is in the final section on dynamic economy, where it talks about people 25 or older with a bachelor's degree or higher. I'm assuming that we're asking that question because college degree and postgraduate degrees tend to lead to higher wages. Is that accurate? And that's why we're looking at that measure?
Yeah, I think that's generally a good assumption.
One of the things that seems to me that might be a better measure of a dynamic economy would be about information on which jobs pay living wages. You know, we know that here in Santa Cruz, there's a diversity of jobs, and we just read about it in the paper this morning about low unemployment rate, but still challenges for some of our businesses to retain workers because of the high cost of living. And so I'm wondering if our measure for dynamic economy was, instead of the degree, is looking at living wage jobs or number of living wage jobs? And my guess is that there's some BLS data about that, and it would be worthwhile, I think, to take a look at it, because I think that would, given our high cost of living, that seems like that would be a good measure for us, and that's how we should be measuring in some way job quality.
Yeah, we can explore that.
Yeah. Because the other thing I'll just add is, you know, you could go to Cabrillo, get a two-year nursing degree, and graduate into a $60,000 to $80,000 a year job. That wouldn't show up on the statistic because they were not getting a bachelor's degree, but that is a job that someone can afford to live here, and it's one of the, you know, healthcare being one of the four pillars of our economy. So the job quality becomes important as well as just the educational degree. But I appreciate the work that's gone in.
Yeah, we'll take a look at what data is available in the different sources, and if necessary, other areas like BLS or other agencies.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to briefly ask, how do we define poverty when we're asking people whether they are experiencing poverty?
On this measure, it's the federal poverty thresholds, so.
Okay. Because that's an available dataset measure?
Yeah, and we're working to see if there's a better source that takes into accounts, you know, cost of living, especially in California.
Okay. I mean, because, well, PPIC did exactly that, and so if we could integrate in, I think that their dataset is more relevant to us. I guess the question would be if... I guess the question would be if part of this is putting data is putting data out from a comparative standpoint so that people can see how other counties line up. Obviously, the datasets at that point need to line up because the, I believe the PPIC numbers are more accurate. But I also think that they'll appear to inflate compared to what the federal definition would be. And so, but anyway, I think it's a better measurement for us from a policymaking standpoint. If it's possible to integrate in that dataset, I think that'd be useful. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, I think this is a two-year process. And it's great to have this information that you've brought forward. You've talked about the public-facing dashboard and the internal county staff communications. But is there an ongoing communication plan continuously to inform the public other than the dashboard itself?
Yeah, we're working on a communication plan to convey the information. We're just in the development stages of the community indicator dashboards and the program dashboards, but trying to convey to the public what we are putting online and also to our employees about what's available and what we're showing will be important.
Because this is really some great metrics that you've had. And just to better understand it for the general public and myself in some respects is important. So I'm glad we're going to be continuing to develop that.
And this is currently in development still. So we're showing it to the board today and the public, but it's not outward-facing on our website quite yet because we're wanting to get your input and refine these measures. And eventually, once it is public-facing, we will be communicating this more broadly.
Yeah, I think this is going to be good to just show how the county does its business and letting the public know why we're doing it and what we're doing. So, very good.
I had one more question I realized I wanted to ask. It's on the impact measure for perception of crime. And I'm wondering what we're hoping to get out there and why we don't have perception of housing or homelessness, perception of other issues. Why pick out one? And what do we hope to glean from that?
So, perception of crime actually is a question, a new question that was added to the Community Assessment Project that'll be released on Monday. And so that data will be out locally anyway for the county. And I think there's, in general, just a divergence between the actual crime rate and the perception of the crime rate. And I think that's what we're trying to demonstrate.
Yeah, no, I'm wondering why we don't look at other perception issues because we deal a lot with testimony here that are perceptions but not based always in fact. And that's an effort that we have to manage at all times. And so I'm wondering why we're picking one out of all the other measures.
To my knowledge, this is the only one we're measuring, but we don't need to include it if it's.
I think the answer is that the United Way Community Assessment Project included this question, and we're using that as the dataset. So we could talk to them and ask them about the other possibilities. I think that's, because that's what we're doing is we're just using the dataset that's available in terms of this perception question. And it's driven by their survey, and that's the data we're using.
Yeah, well, I'm interested in taking a look at the information. We may just find over time it's not. I'm questioning how we will deal with the information once we have it. Because perceptions, as compared to creating actual programs where we can actually make a difference, perceptions could actually be a lot harder. And we know from lots of polling around issues like crime, the perception is generally way different than the reality of the situation. I don't expect that it'd be very different here in Santa Cruz. And so I don't, over time, I'm not exactly sure how we would measure success with that perception issue because it's just a, it's a very ingrained piece of the American psyche. So I think we can look at it over time and figure out if there's actually any solution to dealing with that perception or whether we should look at other perceptive issues.
Okay, yeah, we can take a look at that.
I want to thank you all. You're doing a good job, and I appreciate all the effort you're putting in here. And thank you very much.
So we're going to move on to the program dashboards now. So we'll have another piece of the presentation.
Excellent. So the operational plan set forth 178 SMART objectives that work to achieve strategic plan goals. Each of the 178 objectives will be updated biannually on the operational plan website. And the first update to the plan will be brought to the board in January 2020. To create a program, we're taking from one to several objectives and grouping them together to create a program. We'll continue to refine the definition as we gain more experience working with departments. And for this fiscal year, our office aims to create dashboards for 10 to 12 programs that measure and report on whether a program is having its intended impact. So asking, are we doing the right thing? The draft project pipeline is provided and includes projects from HSA, HSD, Homeless Services, Public Works, Cannabis, and Planning. Draft programs were selected based on a variety of factors, including likely public interest, links to the operational plan, links to the strategic plan focus areas, available data, and staff capacity. And each program will have two basic results. First, an internal reporting dashboard that is used by the department to increase program impact and recommend changes. And second, an external, public-facing dashboard to provide education and transparency to the community. And so in order to provide a consistent measurement framework for both internal and external reporting, the county is using a results-based accountability framework that asks of each program three basic questions. How much are we doing? How well are we doing it? And is anyone better off? This framework was developed specifically for government programs and has been used for many years by the county's Human Services and Probation Departments. It can apply across a wide range of programs that the county operates and requires, in general, less staff training and expertise than comparable models. And so to give you an idea of how this works in practice, we have invited Eric Strum from the Parks Department and Sarah Jamison from the Probation Department to tell you about their performance measurement projects.
Good morning, Supervisors. Eric Strum, Superintendent with County Parks.
I'm not sure your mic is on.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
Rookie. I'd like to share some of the progress that we've made on our performance measurements projects. Our Parks dashboard starts with a simple park inventory so that folks can quickly find park facilities they're looking for. You can zoom in and out on the map to find parks near you. You can also filter the parks by features such as playground and picnic areas. So if you wanted to find a park with both a playground and a picnic, you could click on both and look at the options. Looking for a skate park near you, you can click on that option too and further narrow the choices. If you live in North County, for instance, we can see that Highlands Park might be a nice option. The link at the bottom of the screen will even provide driving directions. Underneath the inventory, we're developing dashboards related to our awesome programs and great facilities, two pillars of our Parks Department's strategic plan. I'm going to show you a dashboard that we're working on for our aquatic youth. Obviously, we want everyone to have fun in the water. Our aquatic programs give county youth the skills they need to be safe. The first chart focuses on how well we're doing, namely, the percentage of youth that passed their class. We're also tracking enrollment by level so that we can ensure we're meeting the demand for classes. On the next page, you can see how well we're doing, the number of kids enrolled, and you can filter it by level. For instance, if we want to see the number of seahorses, we just click on Seahorse and view the number of classes and total enrollment. If parents want to find out which classes run on Tuesdays or Thursdays, they can do that too. And if they want to sign up, we've provided a link that takes them directly to the registration page. We're currently working with ISD and the CAO to automate these dashboards and get them ready for launch. Our staff, including Kathy DeWile, Amelia Gamboa, Mary Chavez, and fellow Haven Parker have been instrumental in lifting this project. They're producing great results that not only engage the public but also inform our Parks Department. We're confident that as we get more sophisticated, our internal reporting and measurements will all become better. And now I'd like to introduce Sarah Jamison from the Probation Department.
Good morning, Supervisor Sarah Jamison, Senior Departmental Analyst. I'm going to talk a little bit about the dashboard we've been developing for our AB 109 Treatment and Intervention Services. Although they're not the awesome programs the parks have, they're very important programs. Back in June, the board approved over 15 agreements related to a new four-year cycle of funding. These are all outcome-based contracts implementing evidence-based practices and issued with the overall purpose of reducing recidivism among the population receiving the services. Probation's operational plan objective aims to reduce recidivism by 10% over the next two years. The dashboard shows that objective and has further call-out boxes to define recidivism and what AB 109 is. On the following page, we disaggregate the recidivism data further by gender and ethnicity. So the question is then, given this objective, what is our plan to reduce recidivism and make our clients better off? And the dashboard below addresses that. Before we demonstrate those, I should say that we are in the development, the process of developing this data with our community providers. And the data you are about to view is just for display, not actual data. Let's look at Criminal Thinking Dashboard. Criminal thinking, behavior, and peers are the most strongly predictive criminogenic factors for recidivism. This program focuses on self-control, peer relationships, and pro-social values. And looking at the evidence, if we are doing this well, we are looking for about 60% of the clients to demonstrate improvements in these areas based upon pre- and post-assessments. The second layer of the dashboard shows you how much we're doing, the number of clients who are receiving the service, as well as the instruction hours. I've been working with and want to appreciate Andrew Davis and Diane Colcasey with the Probation Department. Once we complete our web app for providers, they will be able to enter data online directly, and it will automatically populate our internal dashboards. Once we validate the data, it will be available on the public dashboard. Thank you.
So, for next steps, we would like to hear your first impressions of these dashboards. We are currently working towards a public release for this website, hopefully sometime in January. We're also working with departments to improve overall data management and to automate reporting across internal and external dashboards. We also intend to be flexible and open about improving these products. These reports are fun to make, and we hope they're useful for departments and the public. And we'll be able to make updates to the dashboards as we learn and grow in this initiative. Lastly, we'll return to the board in May with a progress update. Before we wrap up, we want to make an important point about the scope of population versus program accountability. In the results-based accountability framework, community impact measures ask what results we want for all county residents to have health insurance, access to good food, good schools, et cetera. On the program side, we still care about the same measures, but the program is accountable for the outcomes of the people that it serves, which is a subset of the community. And so for the AB 109 example, we obviously want to reduce recidivism across all of our probation clients. But in the AB 109 program example, we're really focusing just on that cohort who belong to the AB 109 population. And before I end, I'd like to thank a couple people from ISD, Kevin, Tibby, Nada, Silviana, Darlene, and Jan. From Human Services, Shara and Ben. From HSA, Kelly, Rachel, Robert, and Emily. Parks and Probation Leadership from Jeff and Fernando. And the support of all of my colleagues in the Administrative Office, especially Eric and Dave. It's been a true team effort to get us this far and off the ground. And as we continue to learn and progress, hopefully, the results will be satisfactory. And with that, we'll take any questions or feedback.
Well, I'll just say, I really appreciate this work. I think these dashboards will be, have the potential to be used by the community to sort of see what their county dollars are actually supporting and what a difference they're making. And I look forward to, you know, a robust set of these measures on the dashboard so people can really interact with county government in a new way. So thank you for the work that you put into it.
Yeah, when I'm just looking through this and you're flipping through these things with all the kinds of data, I'm thinking that's just too much information. But boy, I'll tell you, you are going to have information on so many different subjects for people to find what they need or what they want. This is really very impressive. Is there any, I don't know if there are any other counties that are taking this approach, but I just want to thank the CAO's office and everybody involved in this for really getting at this to let the county residents know what's available and what we're doing and what we are offering. I don't know of anybody else that's doing it in this regard, in this depth. Have you followed anybody in this process? Or are you a leader, are we a leader?
I mean, there are a lot of counties that are doing really good work with data. And we've looked at a lot of different examples from across the country of things we like and things we don't like.
Yeah, right. Well, congratulations. This is going to be a really viable tool for our county residents.
Just tell everybody you're the first and you're the worst of the town, everybody else. Thank you. And comments from the public? How many people want to speak? About two or three? Okay, three minutes, fine.
Hello, my name is Susan Cavallieri. I live in the city of Santa Cruz, and I just want to make one quick statement. You have bus, you have car directions to the parks. Could you also have bus transportation information? And also walking and biking? Because we're also trying to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, and cars are definitely a problem in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky Steinbrenner, resident of rural Aptos. Thank you for these good reports. It's a tremendous amount of data, and putting it all together in a public-friendly way is a challenge, and I appreciate your work. I want to first speak to the first part of the presentation. I did look at, I have looked at the dashboard, at least what is available now. And I note that there are a couple of, in the Primo presentations, there are a couple of issues that address the planning permit processing. And that wasn't discussed here, but that's a huge issue for a lot of people in this county. And I will tell you that I recently talked with a person who's doing a restaurant project. She had a simple change order in a hood design, and it has been stuck in the planning department for five weeks and is holding up her project. So we have work to do. And I want to just give you that information and hope that we can move forward with improving things and that this dashboard will assure people that you are working for that. I still note there is no youth commission. And that is one issue in government experience and education and outreach we really do need to do. And I really want to see a youth commission here in this county, by youth. So please consider that. Going back to the dashboard, and an issue, and thank you Supervisor Leopold for bringing up the issue of employment and all of that. It is very difficult, I am told, for people in the restaurant trade and the landscape trades to even find workers. They can't keep them here. They can't find them. So that needs to be addressed in our data collection, possibly gathering information from employers and find out what it is that's causing them this difficulty so that our county can address it. Thank you for the information on the perception of crime. I also think there should be other perception information gathered, most notably on the quality of life. I think that's a good overall one that we could use as a metric. The Probation Department, thank you very much for that. I would be interested, as a member of the public, to know in recidivism, how is, how does that interact with drug and alcohol treatment and mental health services? I think that's a good connection to try to make in the whole thing. I would like a definition of the AB 109 population. I don't know what that is. And finally, how will the public be able to interact with this dashboard to add information? information and point out things that would improve it? Thank you very much.
Usually, the federal poverty rate, a lot, a lot of jurisdictions use 150% of the federal poverty rate as representing a level below which you would be poor. The poor families I know are paying not 30, not 40% of their income per rent, they're paying 60, 70% of their income per rent, and they're borrowing money extensively to pay those rents. So we're at a stage in our society's development where we need to have a local minimum wage. We wouldn't be the first county to do that. Other counties in the North Bay have set their own minimum wage just so that families can survive and so that workers want to stay in the area. This is going to be necessary. I propose that it should be, there should be a lower minimum wage for small businesses, say below 50 employees, because I know they struggle. And, but for big, successful outfits, the minimum wage should be a lot higher. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica McGuire again. Easier to just talk this time somehow. It is wonderful to hear your questions about this. My experience speaking with people all over this county for 22 years is the level, levels of overwhelm have risen and risen and risen, as others have just said as well. The perceptions that there is no point in getting involved in local government because we'll never be heard and we don't have time or energy, we're so busy just trying to get our heads above water, is what I hear from people. So these would be further important metrics, please, to level, the levels of overwhelm that people feel, the levels of fright and, and upset that the recidivism issue is so bizarre where they live that people are arrested and put right back out on the street to continue to defile their sidewalks and, and businesses and leaving needles everywhere and all of the things that people come, and I hear people speaking about here, as huge, ongoing problems that aren't being addressed. If we could, please, have at least those included so that the total truth is aimed at. I really appreciate everything you all just said, giving feedback to this. And I love that data can do what it does. And it's really neat that we're on our way to doing something like this uniquely in the county, but the whole truth is really needed. And the, the difficulty of people to even feel they can pay their rent, as the gentleman just said, and move forward, I, I don't see very many people getting online to look at this, from what I've heard. People couldn't come out, more than 50 people, there were probably 50 people in the room last night who were firefighters and, and people in the government trying to help explain why we have to pay another tax to get basic services. And people couldn't come, and plenty of others were upset about that. There's no way to pull people together, it seems, anymore. These are really important aspects that are more than perceptions, that if we could hear you representing that you understand and you're hearing us, you could probably get a lot more people to come to evening meetings, as we've said many times, to participate and, and come and change perceptions, if that's what you believe it's all misperception. But just want to underline, there's so much greater that we need to keep looking at. Please, let's not get lost in the minutia before we make sure we're looking at the whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If we have a motion, or do we, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Caput, I'm listening to the report here and talking about health and safety impacts, and are we doing the right thing in our policies? And Becky brought up about the planning department, and I want to, you know, make this specific, because I'm always talking about health and safety. I wouldn't be coming here otherwise. And so, going through the planning department over the years since I retired from teaching in 2000 zoning administrator meetings, and seeing the approval of the proliferation of these radiation-emitting cell towers, permits issued all the time. And let's be real, these are permits to poison and to radiate the community on behalf of the telecom corporations. And this, to me, is overriding every single policy, every performance level you look at. If our health is threatened, as we are experiencing, which we are, toxic trespass without our informed consent to be radiated by all this, there's a big problem. And the performance level on that, as a member of the public, I'm sure Verizon, they're always praising the planners who recommend approval of these projects. And all these sites are going on in the public right of way now. And the health impacts are well verified, increased cancer incidence, people experiencing insomnia, fatigue, heart irregularities, increase in diabetes, on and on and on. This should be utmost priority. I went to a city council meeting in Santa Cruz within the last year, and there were people there from Monterey County as well, and the topic was health in all policies, looking at what our government policy is doing. We need to have health in all policies. So my, and whatever we're told, you know, we have to follow this egregious law or not, the top priority is protecting the public well-being, and we need to stop the proliferation of this assault on community health, wildlife health, pollinator health. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
I'd move the recommended actions on this plan and offer our thanks to all involved for their work.
Second, we have first from Supervisor Leopold, the second from Supervisor Rick Therson. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes unanimously. How do you like that, huh? All right. And should I go back to?
No, no, we're, we're, until next.
Item number 10, consider an ordinance amending the Santa Cruz County Code to add Chapter 5.47 regarding a change, a charge on single-use disposable cups at businesses in the unincorporated county. Consider proposed notice of exception from SEQA and schedule the ordinance for a second reading and final adoption on December 10, 2019, as outlined in the memorandum of Deputy County Administrative Officer and the Director of Public Works.
Good morning, Tim Gancheroff, Department of Public Works, and with me is Casey Colosa, Recycling and Solid Waste Services Manager. As Chair Caput said, we're here with a proposed ordinance to impose a 25-cent charge on all single-use disposable cups at businesses and special events within the unincorporated county. This is the same ordinance that was before you at your last meeting, so we won't go into all the details that we discussed at length then. At that meeting, you did direct one change, and that is the effective date of the ordinance, which has been modified to take effect on July 1 of next year, 2020. That change is reflected in the ordinance before you. It's the only change. So therefore, we are recommending that the board approve in concept an ordinance to add a charge on single-use disposable cups at businesses in the unincorporated county, accept the proposed notice of exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, and schedule the ordinance for final adoption on December 10, 2019. And we'd be happy to take any comments or questions.
Supervisor Friend?
Thank you, Chair. I have two brief questions that I thought about after our first presentation, and obviously the board's supportive of this, we voted unanimously last time. But one of them, this applies to cold cups as well. I mean, I think a lot of people think about that as, as a single-use, go-to-coffee-shop, single-use hot cups. So my question is, say, in part, that's to discourage single-use because you can have a reusable container for that. How would we address situations where a reusable container isn't possible? I mean, if you are at a, a takeout restaurant and a, and a cold cup option isn't, they're not going to accept possibly a cup for you to bring behind the counter or something for them to fill up, a soda, for example. How would we address that situation where we're still, somebody wasn't given really an option functionally to bring in a reusable option? Is there part of an outreach or a way that we can address those? Because I don't want to, I mean, I want to provide the discouragement, but I also want to provide the ability to actually do something, and I want to ensure that, that everybody has the ability before they're charged.
There was actually a recent change in state law that helps to facilitate this. It removed some of the barriers to people doing exactly what you're just suggesting. It makes it far easier to bring your own containers to restaurants, including fast-food restaurants, and have them refilled. It includes some of the same cautions as in this ordinance so that there are protections for public health. Businesses can refuse to take a container that's dirty or damaged or for other reasons unsuitable. But beyond that, there's no reason that this wouldn't work at those restaurants as well as others.
That's helpful. My second question just dealt with some businesses in my district are already using compostable cups. They cost more, as you know. There isn't, there was some language about potentially if we decided to come back and do an actual ballot measure that there would be a differentiation, but at this point, just so I have clarity, there's no differentiation between those that are already using a compostable cup and those that would be using, say, a plastic disposable cup.
Not at this point, although as the board directed, we will be, be doing outreach to local businesses on that question and, and other related issues to assess the interest in, in that kind of change in the future.
I appreciate that, because I wouldn't want to discourage businesses that have taken it upon themselves to spend more money to do the right thing to actually.
Of course.
Thank you. Thank you for work on this.
I look forward to voting on this measure soon. I'm wondering if you have a target date of when you're going to bring back the contact lens item? And I realize that we never, we didn't talk about it the last meeting, about the effort around the microfiber filter and the public education that we talked about at our original meeting.
We plan on bringing back a measure on contact lenses no later than March, as well as the additional information the board requested on balloons. And we would be happy to follow that same timeline on microfibers if that meets the needs of the board.
Yeah, I'll add that to the, to the motion now when the time comes. Thank you for your work.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, I support these efforts, and I know everybody on the board does, and the people of Santa Cruz County have really been supportive of the measures we've taken before. But I have a concern that I've raised several times, and I think this is good that we're taking this on, but I think the biggest impact, if we can create some kind of a regional solution, and as was mentioned last time, I think, just a couple of weeks ago, that if we can get a regional solution so we can be on the same page with our own cities, the four cities in this county, and I know you've been trying to do that, and they've already have differentiations, so, but if we can try to work that out, we're going to have a much bigger impact, and I know you agree with that, but I think that's the way that we have to address this in the future to really have a significant impact for the whole Santa Cruz County. And I would prefer that we spend these fees on environmental projects, but that would require an election, and I don't know, I'd have to, you'd have to figure out if that would be receptive of the other board members too, but that's what we're, we're trying to do, is protect the environment, and I think that's where these, these efforts should be aimed at helping in that regard.
We will be returning to the board with more information about the possibility of holding an election on the use of the fees. And I'll also share with you that we've done extensive collaboration, not just with the cities within the county, but across the region. I have been asked to share information and sometimes speak to the other boards in the area, numerous city councils, intergovernmental groups like the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments. So we're not quite at the point of regional action that you're suggesting, but, but there is movement in that direction.
That's good to hear. I think that ultimately, that's what's going to really help us improve this situation so we're not having so many plastics, in particular in our waterways, but throughout the community. Thank you.
Yeah, I, thank you. I believe this is a good step in, in the right direction. I think what we need to really do also, most of these cups, cold or hot or whatever, they're not recyclable. Is that true?
Under the county's current ordinance is the cups that are used in fast-food businesses in the county must be either recyclable or compostable.
That's correct.
So, so currently, the majority of them are one or the other, or sometimes both.
Okay.
Now, of course, the recycling market has been in a state of turmoil, as everyone knows, so I might have a different answer on that next week, but that's the truth today.
And I think something that could go along with this, rather than on everything having a surcharge or whatever, that we, we get these fast-food places to have a, I call it a blue basket and then the garbage basket. You look, everything's going in the garbage at the fast-food store. That would be the placemat, that would be the cups, it would be the, for breakfast and all the containers that they put everything in and on. It, it ends up all in the garbage. All they have to do is separate and have a recyclable bin and also a garbage bin. I think I've seen a few Starbucks that have that, and we, we need to do that, because that's a lot of garbage that's going into the landfill, and probably a certain percentage could be recycled. And then the other would be to go after the producers, the, the people who make up all these plastic things, to make sure that they are able to recycle everything that they're making.
The state has actually taken some related action on both of those items. The governor recently signed a new bill that will require businesses across the state to provide recycling bins for their customers and where appropriate compost bins as well. As part of updating our county code, we're working with council to integrate those new requirements into our county code, and that will be coming before you in the near future.
I, I think I like that. I, I think that's going to be a bigger help than this. This is a step in the right direction, though.
Absolutely. You'll be seeing that soon. As far as turning off the tap on plastic pollution, there was a lot of publicity about a, a pair of bills in the legislature last session, AB 1080 and SB 45, which would have established significant requirements on the producers of plastic packaging and other kinds of packaging that are problems in litter and pollution. That bill was continued into the next session, which begins in January, but we're optimistic at seeing significant state action on those bills.
Okay. And I'll just throw this out, I think 25 cents is what is being proposed here.
That's correct.
Okay, I'd, I'd just throw it out. I'd, I'd like to see it less, have it conformed with Watsonville, the city, 10 cents, but I think that that, I think both of them will, will achieve what we're looking for, and 25 cents seems to be quite a bit, but if anybody wants to second that, I guess I'm offering that as an amendment. Okay. I don't hear any, you're not fighting to.
Well, you might remember Supervisor that when staff talked about Well, you might remember, Supervisor, that when staff talked about the setting of the 25-cent fee, it was based on social science research, which showed that at a quarter is when people actually started shifting their practice. At 10 cents, not so much. And so what we're trying to do here is get people to shift their habits, to start thinking about having reusable cups that they can bring with them, and stop the use of single-use disposable cups. And so that's why we're considering this fee. It's been considered in other cities as well.
Okay.
I would add that the draft ordinance in process, the city of Santa Cruz currently has the 25-cent charge as well. That's tentatively scheduled to go before their council in January.
Okay. All right. So that fails for lack of a second. We have a comment.
Thank you for this information. My name is Becky Steinbrenner, resident of rural Aptos. I really want to thank you for the work and support, reduction in plastic overall. Somebody need to start my timer. Thank you. Can't believe I said that. But anyway. I have, I have an issue with compostable things because my kids have done science-fair experiments, and things to compost need air. And compostable items do not compost in the landfill. So it's sort of a false impression. Once something goes to the landfill, it's there because there's no air in that. And to compost, you have to have air. So what I would like to see in this county is going along in the vein of what Supervisor Caput said, let's put more separation for opportunities for the customers who are going to pay more for these cups, and put them in a separate bin. And then let's establish a composting site for this, where it's ground up, not unlike our yard waste, where things actually do compost. They are turned, and they do compost. And that would truly reduce the amount of material going into our landfill. It would also raise the awareness, as Supervisor Caput has said, that yes, you can help separate things. And it gives people sort of a stake in the game, other than just shelling out another quarter for the use of these one-time plastics. I also really feel that we need to look at how this extra 25 cents on each cup is going to be used. We've seen with a plastic bag ordinance where people are reducing use of plastic that way, bringing their own bags. But still, the merchants get that extra quarter. And I would really like to see, there's been nothing changed in the bag ordinance that puts some of that money into recycling efforts, composting efforts, something like that. And I would really like to see this county take a lead in that. And the bag ordinance has been in effect long enough that we can now, our merchants have their own suppliers, and they've kind of worked it out. And I think we need to really step up a little bit further and do that with this cup ordinance also, to go the extra step. Use some of that money that merchants are collecting, that people are willing to pay. And let's put it to really reducing the landfill impacts and to doing true composting that can really make a difference. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you. You know, we have KSBW-TV here, and normally, they're asking us questions and opinions. I just wanted to ask, Phil Gomez, I'm going to put you on the spot. What's your opinion on this?
I have nothing to say.
Decline to comment, then.
I appreciate the opportunity.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
This may seem a little fanciful, but bear with me. In London, I worked for one of the largest defense corporations in the country, Vickers Armstrong Company. And one of their side products was hyperbaric chambers, medical-use chambers. I'm trying to answer Becky's question about the need for oxygen to decompose things. The hyperbaric chamber produces oxygen, I think, up to three or four times normal atmospheric level. That's enough oxygen to break down anything. Increasingly, industrial experimental products are becoming available that can take any kind of hydrocarbon and process it either into fuel, as gas or liquid, or other byproducts. So our technology department should be looking into stuff like that. I'll try to be helpful.
Good.
Monica McGuire again, singing for you. We hear these voices singing these songs. There are many more of us who need to sing along. We talk about reuse being infinitely better than recycling, the phrase I brought up last time, and I hope you will use it because there's so many ways we can't see people getting involved and caring past their overwhelm. People need a reason to join in and do something better for all of us. Maslow's hierarchy shows we can't if we're doing too much to pay rent and buy the food to begin with. So I'm glad you're talking about it again. Ask you to remember the cigarette butt problem that was brought up before as well. And thank you, Becky, for being an unpaid supervisor with her incredible ability to bring all the information she learns to this microphone in just three minutes every time. Thank you.
That was beautiful. Thank you, Monica. I think it was Albert Einstein who said, "The best refuge from the miseries of life are music and cats." Thank you for the music part of it, Monica. Anyway, talking about the manufacturers, the producers of these toxics, toxic plastics, chemicals, that's key. And I see this embedded, you know, I always ask this question, why is this happening? Why is this awful thing happening? And who benefits? And I see it as a system problem, that we're in a capitalist system where pollution is somebody's profit. Common sense tells us, and scientific information, that when contaminants are put into the environment, they're picked up in the whole food chain, and most of them are there for years or almost forever. The question is, while these are good efforts, it's like a drop in the bucket. And I think the figure I heard on the radio was $180 billion, is that it, going into new plastic production. And I remember when the single-use plastic bag ordinance that was passed, the bill also had money for producing more plastic, but bags that are used more than once. That doesn't solve the problem. It's at the production, the source. And how do we get to that? And to me, it's disconcerting, the diversion to think we're really dealing with a problem in these efforts, when the massive contamination and the profit of these corporations from producing this goes on and on. And it's just really, you know, many of you have young children. What kind of future is there for our children and the children of the planet, and the wildlife and the insects with all this radiation and chemical pollution? We need a different system that prioritizes health and well-being and the environment well-being for everyone. It's a system problem. Thank you.
Susan Cavallari, I just want to say that coffee cups that are so ubiquitous in the city of Santa Cruz cannot be recycled. The interior of the cup is plastic, so it is not a single component of material. I do want to thank you very much for your efforts to limit the disposable cups. There is a site called Rethink Disposal. They say that Americans use $180 billion disposable cups annually. This amounts to using 22 billion gallons of water, 26 billion pounds of CO2 is produced, and over 20 million trees are lost. If you replace one cup every day for a year with a reusable cup or mug, you save 126 trees, 12 pounds of solid waste, 76 gallons of water, and 87.6 pounds of greenhouse gas emissions. So it is a very small step, but definitely one that needs to be done. And so thank you so much for your action. I know Berkeley does 25 cents a cup, and people have stated that if they have to pay 25 cents for a cup, they will bring their own. And this is the route that I believe we have to go. Thank you.
Well, we'll bring it back. This has to have four votes, am I correct?
No, this is just a majority. It just needs three votes.
Well, it's an ordinance, or, how, some, some action requires four out of five, and some require three out of five.
This ordinance does not require four out of five votes. It's a simple majority.
So three, a majority is enough.
That's correct.
Yes.
That's correct. So I just want to make it clear.
Chair, I would like to make the motion to adopt the recommended actions and directly, additionally, direct our staff to return in March or before around a contact lens ordinance, information about the balloons, and information about a public education campaign around the microfiber pollution strategies.
And then to clarify to the public, 25 cents goes to the actual business or the one that has to do the reuse. Is that correct?
That's correct. The funds would remain with the business.
So it's not a tax that we're getting the money from?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Passes four to nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then we go to item number 11. Quickly, ordinance amending chapters 9.08, 9.16, 9.120, 924, 9.28, 9.32, 9.36, 9.37, 9.45, and 9.46 of the Santa Cruz County Code to correct typographical, well, anyway, errors. Address organizational issues. Align the code with changes to the state law. Delete unnecessary material and make additional miscellaneous changes. And schedule the ordinance for final adoption on December 10, 2019, as outlined in the memorandum of the county council. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisor. Jason Heath with County Council's office. This is the 11th time now that we're coming with county code updates in this ongoing project. This item addresses chapters in Title IX. A lot of issues regarding parking, speed limit, thoroughfares, things within the ambit of the Department of Public Works. These have all been vetted with DPW, and I can answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any? We don't? Okay.
You want to go out to the public first?
I can motion.
You want to go out to the public?
Public, right. Comments from the public? Okay. Bring it back to the board. Supervisor McPherson?
Second.
Second by Leopold. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it passes unanimously. And if that brings us to the 1045 one, we should go, or we're going to start that one right now, and then we'll take a break after. Okay. Now I have to find my paper. Where is it? Okay, hold on. Today, we have Mary Ann Lobaldbo. Did I pronounce that correct?
Okay.
And Christine Horvat, Public Works Department, Recycling and Solid Waste Program coordinators and educators here to present this item.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Caput. I'm going to give a moment for the folks that come on in.
Sure. Did I pronounce your name right?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Okay.
Did I pronounce yours right? I have it written out phonetically, so I get it right. So, all right. Everybody's here? On behalf of Public Works Department, we would like to present to the board the businesses in the county that have met the criteria to become a certified green business. The county's green business certification program is an incentive-based program designed to encourage businesses to meet and exceed environmental standards while conserving natural resources. The businesses receiving the award today have voluntarily reduced water consumption, retrofitted lights, and made other electrical modifications to reduce energy consumption. These businesses have also reduced solid waste through recycling and smarter purchasing, and have gone above and beyond regulatory requirements by implementing pollution prevention practices in their businesses. The county certification process involves a series of rigorous audits by environmental and conservation experts to come up with the best available technology to prevent pollution and conserve natural resources. Certified businesses have invested significant time, effort, and financial resources to ensure that they meet the criteria for certification. These businesses are the industry front-runners that meet and exceed exceptional environmental standards. Christina?
Good morning. The California Green Business Network has been operating as a nonprofit for the past four years and has received three 1 million annual appropriations from the Cal EPA to start several new programs and to fund existing programs. The county of Santa Cruz has received $20,000 in funding each year from the state and will continue to receive this funding. We would like to thank the board for the support to keep this program successful.
The names of the businesses that have qualified for this year's Green Business Award will now be read so that representatives of these businesses are recognized for their efforts. When the name of your business has been read, please come to the front of the room. Members of the audience, please hold your applause until the end of the reading for each district so we can celebrate the businesses within each district together. We'll start with the businesses... We'll start with the businesses in the First District, announced by Supervisor John Leopold.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to all the businesses who take the time to go through this certification. As I look at this year's list, there are so many businesses that I frequent and know that they also contribute back to the community in lots of different ways. This is just another way in which they are showing their commitment to our community. If the following businesses would come forward for receiving certification: Clearview LLC, Coffetopia on both Portola Drive and Capitola Road, New Bohemia Brewing Company, or NUBO, Lewis Tree Service, PPD Multimedia, Salon Santa Cruz, Bobby's Pit Stop, IO Motors, Discretion Brewing, Monterey Bay Mortgage, Santa Cruz Neurofeedback Center, Somerset Door and Window, The Jam Lab Santa Cruz, Treehouse, Skyland Community Church, Mix Automotive, the Santa Cruz County Sanitation District, Congregational Church of SoCal, and Green Man Organics. Please give these businesses a round of applause.
The Second District Supervisor Zach Friend.
Thank you, Chair. We have a number of businesses in the Second District as well. We have Matter Cushions and Accessories, Art of Santa Cruz, the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Cruz, Kickback, the SOS Company, The Zero Shop, Mid Valley Supply, The Grunsky Law Firm, Applied Survey Research, Total Comm, Santa Cruz County Bank, Aptos, The Maynard Group, Web of Life Field School, or Wolf School, Capitola Vet Hospital, Emerald Iguana Salon, New Leaf Community Market in Capitola, Way of Life, Whole Foods Market in Capitola, Satellite Telework Network, Mount Madonna Center and Institute, and the Mount Madonna School, and the Community Foundation of Santa Cruz County. And also, because Supervisor Cunnerty couldn't make it, I'd like to recognize his businesses in the Third District, which is the Davenport Resource Service Center. If you are here, please give these businesses also a round of applause.
I'm just curious, from the Grunsky Law Firm, is that... We have somebody from the Grunsky Law Firm?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah. That goes way back. When I was a kid, there was a senator or congressman, or Grunsky?
Yeah, yeah. Let him finish taking the picture.
Okay. Okay. The Fourth District, I'd like to acknowledge Digital Nest, Immigrant Legal Services of the Central Coast, Freedom Tax Service, Nutri Natural, and Katotani Auto Repair, Katie's Cold Press Juice and Smoothies, Paharo Valley Chamber of Commerce and Agriculture, Carol's Flowers Decorations and Gifts, Revolution Gym and Wellness, Green Waste Recovery, Inc., Monarch Services, Kitchen Incubator, El Paharo Community Development Corps, and Paharo Valley Arts, the Watsonville Law Center, and the Santa Cruz County Bank Watsonville Office. Please give these businesses a round of applause. District Five?
Yes, thank you. Last but not least, in the Fifth District, and I want to just congratulate each and every one of the businesses. What you're doing is making our communities better and more environmentally sound. It's so important. This is where the rubber hits the road, where we really get things done, and the local people are doing it. So I appreciate each and every one of the businesses. But those from the Fifth District are the San Lorenzo Valley Water District, Sukis, Santa Cruz County Jail, Chocolate Visions, Faust Salon and Spa, Scotts Valley Chamber of Commerce, Brunetti's Interiors, City of Scotts Valley, Wild Roots Market in Felton, Santa Cruz County Bank, Scotts Valley, and the Scotts Valley Water District.
On behalf of the county of Santa Cruz, I want to thank each business recognized today for the continued support of county's green business program. We invite business representatives to gather in the hallway where public works staff have arranged a reception. We'll take at least a 15-minute break. We'll come back for closed session. Do we have anything reportable from closed session?
There may be a reportable item, depending on your vote.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
authorize my office to file an appeal in a matter that is confidential. Once that appeal is on file, I can answer questions about procedural aspects of it. Thank you.
Can you say which case that appeal applies? Thank you.
Thank you for checking.
Thank you very much.
So did they go back in?
No, they're done. They're done.
Done for the day.
Many of the references are adjourned.